Good evening. Tonight's meeting of the Arlington School Committee is being conducted in person and through the use of Zoom. This meeting is being simultaneously broadcast on ACMI, and the meeting is being recorded. Because all members, no, all members are not present, we will be, all votes are required to be taken by roll call. Persons wishing to access the meeting using Zoom may find information on how to do so on the town's website. The posted agenda and supporting materials for this meeting are also available on the town's website. Due to open meeting law restrictions, the committee cannot participate in or access Zoom's chat function. While everyone is welcome to observe the meeting, active remote participation requires advance notice. All participants are asked to activate their camera and shall provide their full name in the interest of developing a record of the meeting. We have no public comment this evening. So, do any of our representative, Ms. Maderos, did you want to say anything?
In particular, Vice CEO L.
And Sophia?
Yes.
Did you want to tell us anything?
I think we had slides. Liz, did we set up slides?
I sent you a slide.
You want me to pull it up? Do you sit?
It's only one slide, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah. Last time I was here, you guys wanted to see our Student of the Month and Staff of the Month. We don't have Staff of the Month running yet, because that'll be for next month, but we thought we'd start off with Student of the Month, and so I'll explain that once it's up.
You emailed it to me, Liz?
I did.
Hopefully.
When?
That wasn't my job, so don't know about it.
When?
I'll just start with the other updates. We had our pep rally today, which was very successful. From lots of people, they had a blast. We had the chorus performing, as well as band and the cheerleaders. We also revealed our new mascot, which was very exciting, which is a mammoth, a woolly mammoth, not a mastodon, very odd. I don't understand that, but that's okay. It was very exciting. And then we also had a custodian appreciation breakfast last week for Custodian Appreciation Day. And we're planning homecoming, and that'll be on November 7th. And our September Citizen of the Month was Addie Darling, and she's a junior, and she is just a lovely and positive person who has been just a really big pillar of our community and was actually one of our MCs for the pep rally. And she was just a really star student this month, so she got some recommendations, and now she's Citizen of the Month.
Great. Thank you. That brings us to the Middle School Pathway Exploration Policy First Read.
Okay. I can start, and then Mr. Schlichtman, if you want to say any more about the draft you developed. Superintendent Driscoll, would you like to come up and join us at the table here? So, we have a guest with us, not to give any sort of comprehensive presentation, but to answer any questions if folks have them. There is a requirement this year that we have a policy in our handbook related to providing access to all middle school students to career vocational programming. And we don't have any of some of the challenges that I think precipitated the need for a policy in our handbook, but I invited Superintendent Driscoll here first to say hi, because she hasn't actually come and visited the school committee before, also to answer any questions that the committee might have about the policy. The goal tonight is to do first read, forward it along to policy subcommittee to consider. We do need to approve it prior to November 1st and upload it to DESI. We can ask for an extension if we need one, but I think we should be able to make it within the timeline. And Superintendent Driscoll was kind enough to give us a draft of the policy that she's been sharing also with other communities that send their students to Minuteman. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Schlichtman or any community members or superintendent, if you wanted to provide a brief overview.
Okay, so, we have, which is not in, I don't think this is the right version in the, or maybe it is. No, this is not the right version. There's a later version that should be up in Novus. But what we have is a, we've taken our current policy LB and added an exhibit LBA that deals strictly with Minuteman. We'll call this a first read. This is the wrong version in Novus. There's a revised version from last night, but...
What's in the section of your part of the new vote?
Well, okay.
Yeah, there's another.
There's another one in Novus.
In Novus, it's below the Fall Athletics update.
First read, refer versions to policy.
This is the same agenda item. It shouldn't be two separate agenda items.
File LB. That's still the wrong one.
Was it the next one? Policy LB, file LBA?
The file name should have LB, LBA revised.
Oh, okay.
I'll make sure you all get it, but this would be a first read. And basically, what we did was take in our policy LB and then attached most of the description from the suggested policy from Minuteman and revise that to have Arlington language in it, and that would be the LBA, which is the exhibit, or the associated policy that deals with specifically with how we relate to Minuteman. It's been reviewed by the superintendent, both superintendents in the room. It conforms with state requirements and our current practice.
Do you want to say a little bit about why the state was looking to do this and some of what your experience has been working with Arlington?
Sure, I would love to. First, thank you for having me here today. It's nice to meet all of you online and in person. The reason why this exists is because some vocational districts were having their access blocked to students. So that means there are things that you do here that we don't have an issue with that wasn't happening in other places. So, for example, our admissions director always comes to middle schools to make presentations, and parents have access to information. You share information about how to contact students, so on and so forth, so that they can have appropriate information about all of our Chapter 74 programming, which is different from the programming you have here in Arlington. So, if you notice, some of the things have, you need to put the information on your public facing website by October 15th. There's some perimeters in there that really need to happen to help some other districts and kids have access to know what exists. So if you were in a partnership with an agricultural school, or you had your own Chapter 74 programs, those would actually also be included in the policy, but for Arlington, it is just Minuteman. And if you're curious about what Minuteman has been up to lately, our culinary students made you those cookies, not for those of you who are online. I would love for you to scan the QR code with the volume fully up on your phone later on.
The QR code is actually on the cookie?
The QR code is...
I thought it was on the wrapper.
No, it's actually on the cookie. That's why you have two cookies, so you can look at one, and you can literally scan it and go to your new favorite video and then eat the cookie.
I've never eaten a QR code before.
Does anybody have any questions? Dr. Allison Ampe?
Just to clarify, so basically, we're going through this because we're told that we have to.
Precisely.
And we're not changing anything in what we've done or our future practice. I mean, I know my daughter went on a Minuteman tour. I know other school committee members have. Their children attending Minuteman, so it's not...
Yeah, so, we are not changed, this would not change any of our current practices. It really just documents best practice, and the regulations are very clear and specific. And we just made sure that, the template that I made, I actually met with every single one of our sending district superintendents, because this was, I would say, a surprise regulation change pretty late in the summer. So, everybody's pretty much sticking to the same language, and we have no complaints from any of our, about any of our sending districts, especially not Arlington. I want to say we have 500 students scheduled to come visit on our showcase day. So there's, they absolutely understand, and you do a wonderful job showing kids options about future career choices.
Okay, great. One of my questions for Superintendent, when we met about this, was, you know, are we, how are things going? Are we in compliance with this and the spirit of it? And it sounds like the answer's resounding yes. And so, it was mostly just because we hadn't had the opportunity to have her here that I wanted to make sure you had a chance to say hello, and we appreciate the cookies. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anybody online have any questions? Thank you for joining us and for the cookies.
Thank you very much.
And we know you're very busy, so...
I appreciate it.
We're glad you're...
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Next on the agenda is the Fall Athletics update. Is Mr. Bowler?
Where's Mr. Bowler?
Here.
He was going to be here at 11:15. He knows to come soon.
Should we then, do you want, Mr. Schlichtman, would you like to do the first read for policy ECEV?
Okay, sure, we can do the first read on policy ECEV. All we are doing here is a technical revision to the ECEV policy, because when the police department started to enforce it, we weren't quite specific enough about our expectations for enforcing versus non-ticketing, particularly around the issue of people who are plugged in and their charging session has ended, which was not our intent. Also, we do have a provision in there just clarifying the rates for the charging at the stations on the school department property are set by the town of Arlington. So these are basically technical changes. The police department asked for this, so we're here at first read. I'd also like to move to suspend the rules in order to bring this to second read for prospective approval tonight.
So, there's motion?
I'll make the motion.
I made the motion already.
You made the motion.
Motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, I'll second it.
Does anybody want to say anything about it? Okay, and we will take a roll call vote. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlichtman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Mr. Thielman.
Oh, Mr. Thielman. I forgot he was actually here, since I'm in his chair. Mr. Thielman votes yes, so it's a 5-0 vote.
Move adoption of ECEV as presented.
Second. Anybody want to say anything? Ms., I'll let Ms. Exton sit down. Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Mr. Schlichtman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
And Ms. Exton, we are voting on...
I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. So that is a five votes in favor, one abstention, so the motion carries.
Thank you.
Let's see.
I could also buffer zone.
Do you want to do the buffer zone report while we're waiting for Mr. Bowler?
Sure. Okay. Hold on, let me get to the right slide. Okay. So, good evening, everyone. I am pleased to talk with all of you about our buffer zone strategy for 2025 and provide a report on how some of that worked out for our newly enrolling students. I'm going to start with a purpose and overview of the buffer zone policy, just as a reminder to those who might be watching in the community about how our buffer zones operate and why they're there. I'd like to talk a little bit about buffer zone assignments and grade levels and how those fell this year. And we had this year, if you recall, last year, we talked a lot about buffer strategy and how to go about making a plan for assigning students to buffer zones, sort of ahead of an enrollment process, and what the impact of that was on school and class size balancing. You're here now, should I keep going? I can.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go ahead and do this first. And then I want to talk about what the breakdown was, because there was a pretty significant impact of that strategy on first, second choice and where folks were assigned, and then talk a little bit about what the preferred strategy might be for FY '27 as we head into thinking about next school year already. It's hard to believe. And then I also included appendix slides in your materials. These were from last year, because last year, one of the exercises that we did in preparation for this year was sort of a retroactive analysis of what it might have looked like had I deployed a certain strategy in the prior year. So I just wanted that to be there, because as a reminder of what we had discussed last year with regards to the buffer strategy. So, in 2026, 2025, '26, no, in FY '25, the buffer priorities were for FY '26 to alleviate enrollment and space pressure at Thompson. That's been a priority on this list for many years, and so part of what we were trying to do this past year was have a greater impact on that. Shift some of the Metco enrollment to Dallin and Pierce from Hardy and Bishop because of some of the enrollment and space pressures at Thompson and the impact that that has when you swing outwards towards Hardy and Bishop when you're doing the enrollment assignments. Take a look at the effectiveness of the Thompson buffer zones with some proactive placement and budget strategies established, and then balance elementary class sizes. The buffer zone policy, just as a reminder, is designed to make sure that our elementary schools and the classrooms within them are balanced. The key focus there is on establishing as much equity in class size as we can, and the goal of this report is to report on how that policy is impacting balancing and work towards improving the strategy for use of the buffer zones. So that is what we are here to talk about tonight. From the 2024 presentation, we had talked about a number of next steps. So in last year's presentation, we were working on doing some five-year weighted average projections, and we produced those, and they demonstrated a pretty strong tendency for the birth rate to have an impact on the out-years projections. We have therefore gathered quotes for some longer-range projections. We have gotten an initial pass at that, and we have asked the vendor to go and do some more GIS analysis to sort of make those as accurate as we possibly can. And we looked at some different options during the budget process for allocating kindergarten sections so that we could use the buffer zones to adjust class sizes. We have also, we also talked last year about whether we wanted to expand buffer zones or reduce the assignment zone, expand or reduce the assignment zone for Thompson, and we didn't do any changes for FY '25 or FY '26, but we decided we would take a look at what the impact of that strategy was, and so that's what I'm going to report on a little bit today. So here are some of our numbers. What you, what I'll highlight here is that we had fewer buffer zone students this year. Last year did seem to be a bumper year for some reason. We had a lot more new students enrolling in buffer zones. 148 last year. The year before that, we had 120. So we're back to 120. We had about 100, we had exactly 120 new students enroll in buffer zones this school year, and the breakout is in front of you. We had a number of students who did receive or were placed in their first choice school, more students who were placed in their second choice school. And then there's the comparison with the previous year right here. And then there are a couple of things, this is just the grade level breakdown. I'm not going to rest here for very long. It's similar to what we've seen in prior years, a number of students who joined in other grades, but I do want to highlight something from the previous slide, which is that where we were trying to impact enrollments the most was at Stratton and Thompson. These are the two schools that have the most enrollment pressure. At Thompson, it's because of the number of kids in that zone. At Stratton, it has a little bit to do with the number of kids in that zone. It also has to do with the size of the program at that school, because a number of students, it's our largest program, and so that creates some enrollment pressure as well. And then there's enrollment pressure that happens at Bishop as a result of that, because both of those schools share a buffer zone with Bishop. So at Stratton and Thompson, the strategy that we used last year had the impact that we wanted. We saw fewer students from buffer zones assigned to those schools, so we have these fewer numbers here. It didn't pull it down maybe quite as much as we might have liked, and that is chance how many students end up in those particular buffer zones. It also had the effect we were trying to have at Hardy and Pierce, as well as at Bishop. So part of the goal was to swing students' assignments away from Bishop so that we would have the space to assign buffer students from Thompson and Stratton to Bishop. And so that meant that a lot of students were assigned to Bracket who may have requested Bishop or been in the Bishop buffer zone, ended up being assigned to Bracket. And one of the other things we noticed is that there really were not a lot of students that moved into a buffer zone in Dallin at all. We only had four students in a buffer zone with Dallin. They were all assigned to Dallin, and so that was one of the things that made it a little more difficult for us to swing, because we didn't have very many students in that area. However, it did work to do this and to set that strategy ahead of time. But I want to talk a little bit about what that required and then what some of the considerations might be as we head into the future years, because we had to make specific investments as a result of deciding to use that strategy, and so that could be informative for what we might want to do moving forward. So when we talk about impact, one of the reasons why we have this is to balance class sizes. One of the other reasons why we have this is to balance school sizes. And so it worked for both, but we do have smaller kindergarten sections. So the class size range, this is the graph that we've used in the budget for the last couple of years to just sort of demonstrate evenness when it comes to overall class size. And then that 20.4 is reflecting the actual, which is actually what we had guessed would be the case in terms of average class size for FY '26. So we guessed pretty closely for kindergarten enrollment. The class size range for FY '25, in terms of the average, was about one and a half students per class. The class size range was 2.5 this year, and that's because we had the same high mark, but a lower low mark with our kindergarten sections. And so chances are, we have a couple kindergarten sections that are small enough that those, that we may lose a section as they head up into some of the upper grades. I typically wouldn't do that as they head into first grade, though, because we have new enrollments when students enter first grade from families that may have kept their student in a kindergarten program at their preschool and then enroll in first grade. So we've always had a little bit of a bumper year in first grade, and I will generally worry about pulling a section out as a group heads into first grade unless it's a very, very small class size. So that's worth thinking about as we head into next year and think about multiple budget scenarios. How do we want to invest in sections in any given scenario? And what size do we want to set as our goal cap? Right now, my 25 is the number I operate with as a cap. So, and then if you look, but if you look at school size range, this had a really significant impact, the approach that we took to buffer zones, because the high watermark for FY '25 was 537 at Thompson, and the low was 318 at Pierce. Both Pierce got bigger and Thompson got smaller, so that range of 219 students from our smallest school to our biggest school dropped from, to 187 students from our smallest school to our biggest school. So that's a much more balanced school allocation, and that makes for slightly easier allocation of resources, less inequity with regards to large, large class sizes at certain schools. And so it had certainly a positive effect on school size. This chart is showing some of the impact on choice, and what I'll note is that there were a lot more folks who got a no to their first choice selection during the buffer process. So we had a number of students' families who entered the waitlist because they got a no on the first round of decisions. And the way that that operated was essentially if a student was in the Thompson-Hardy buffer zone or in the Thompson-Bishop buffer zone, and they did not have a sibling, regardless of any, pretty much anything else that was submitted, they were assigned to Bishop or Hardy. And if they were at Bishop-Stratton, they were assigned to Stratton. If they were at Stratton-Pierce, they were assigned to Pierce. So it swung to the west, essentially, that initial set of decisions, and there were not exceptions to that. And then families were told they could enter the waitlist. And then we made waitlist decisions later in August based on what was the almost final set of numbers that I had. And at the same time, we made decisions surrounding staff requests. So we wait till the last possible second to determine whether or not there are any ads we can give back to give people either their first choice or to consider whether or not we have space for our staff members. So we do that buffer thing first, and then we go to our staff list under the contract provisions for the AEA. So this is how that broke out this year. You'll notice that everybody at Hardy and Pierce got their first choice if they had requested Hardy or Pierce. They may not have gotten their first choice if they landed at Hardy or Pierce, if they had selected a neighbor school as their first choice. But everybody who asked for that as their first choice got that as their first choice. The same was not true for Bishop, for Stratton, for Thompson, some of the places where we knew we had the most constraints. And so this strategy works, and it creates more situations where families may have hoped for something and not gotten what they were hoping for. So a quick summary of this, there were fewer buffer zone assignments this year than there were last year, and that was somewhat disproportionate to the number of new enrollments, but it was more of a return to normal. So there were proportionately fewer buffer zone assignments this year than last year, but I think last year was the disproportionate event. I think last year, we just happened to have more students move into buffer zone areas, and I'm not quite sure why. Last year, we maybe had significantly more folks move into grades one through five, and I wonder if that's not why we saw that bumper last year. We had that early establishment of the buffer strategy. It seemed to be successful in driving down the enrollment at Thompson and driving up enrollment at our smaller school at Pierce, but we still have some pressure points remaining, particularly in the Bishop-Stratton-Thompson-Pierce zone of schools, and we had a lot more families who didn't get their first choice selection. Classes are staying consistent, but they're lowering kindergarten due to that strategy where we put those additional sections at Pierce and Hardy. They're not quite as filled in as we might have expected had we had the same level of buffer students as we had had the previous year. It balanced school enrollment, doesn't necessarily balance the class enrollments as much for us to do that, and obviously requires that additional investment. So I have a couple of topics for discussion, and I would love some input on, from the committee, on some of these things. We had talked last year about the possibility of expanding the buffer zone between Thompson and Hardy to cover the full zone between Mass Ave and Broadway. Right now, it covers about half of that zone. I would like to explore this, mostly because I think that there's not a significant difference for most of the families within that couple block area, and expansion of that zone will allow for a lot more flexibility, particularly when it comes to assignments at Thompson. And then I'm curious about the committees or the community's interest in assessing some of the other buffer boundaries to maximize flexibility, particularly as we think about budget constraints and the possibility of needing to consider section size limits as we build the FY '27 budget. If we were to follow that same strategy with fewer planned kindergarten sections and an assumption of stable enrollment, it would be possible to reduce the kindergarten sections for next year by up to three, like saying we got all the exact same number of students. However, the class size range in that scenario does take us up to 25 in several, I think, three spots, and it creates a wider range of up to seven students compared to currently. So you would have very small sections in some places, you would have very large sections in others, if we followed that exact same strategy to keep balancing the schools. And so there are gives and takes on this, and I'm happy to work through some scenarios for folks, but that's one consideration. Like if we want to balance the schools, then we end up with a wider range for sections. And I think something I'm curious about is, you know, new enrollments at Dallin, new enrollments in those buffer zone areas are very low, and so that's making it challenging to sort of swing all the way around to some of the other schools that didn't have as high of new enrollments this past year. And I also wanted to note that the program size is playing a significant role at Stratton, and that is constraining some of the determinations, particularly along the north side of town, allowing for just a little bit less flexibility because of sort of where Bishop is situated in between those two schools. So I'm open to input, I'm open to referral for further discussion, but we are going to enter registration season before we know it, and we're already starting to think about budget. So because these decisions had a pretty positive impact on the things we were trying to influence... to influence last year and because we made some of those determinations early, one of the things I am convinced of is that having a buffer strategy right away when we start to do the buffer assignments is critical. We kind of need to know what we're after and assign with that in mind. And then we can always make adjustments from waitlists as we go. But I, I think that that approach is a good one. We just need to think about it in light of budgeting sections and whether or not we want to make any adjustments to the borders themselves to maximize some of the flexibility that we get from the buffer zones as we head into budget seasons in the next couple of years.
I'm going to just ask a question. The first, can, can you go back to that first consideration and explain? I, I'm not sure I'm following the, how we would, what you're saying with reducing the kindergarten sections.
So, if we were to assume stable enrollment and take a look at the places where, for example, we have three sections and 50 students, you could conceivably follow this similar strategy, not plan for as many sections, if you go look at the enrollments, for example, for today. And have some sections that would have 25 students in them. There are a couple places. Dallin in particular actually only had 50 students this year in kindergarten. And, and that is right-
Pierce only has 51.
At that line, right. So, Pierce, Dallin, and I believe Hardy is four, but they're right at the line between three and four? So, you could conceivably pull that down to three and assign strategically, but you will have much larger sections. And I know that we have, you know, some budget conversations to have for next year. And that's one of the things that we'll need to take a look at is how the breakout operates. When you create the larger sections of, with 25 to 27 as your cap on the section, the range gets very large. Because by definition, you're going to have some spots where you need to have that additional section or you have a very large class of 30. But if you add the section, you have a very small class. And so, one of the, like, the goal of the buffer zones is the equitability of those class sizes. And the reality is that, given, given the size of our schools and the number of sections we can have, we're going to have a large range if we take sections out.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Allison Ampe?
So, one thing, when you, so just looking at that same section, it's helpful to me if it's clarified, if you're saying all sections are below 25 or if you just mean K, you know, it's helpful to know if you're talking about just the kindergarten section sizes or are we talking the whole range? Because I have different feelings about different age groups at, say, 25 students per class. But going back to the slide that's on choice, it's number nine of 15. I was just wondering if anyone's talked to people why Bishop was so much of a first choice this year? And, because I'm wondering, is it because of childcare? Is it because there were many families coming in and so there were like clumps, you know? So, it's not, yes, it's this many high, but actually it's, you know, four of them were from one family. So, do you see what I'm saying?
I didn't do, and I, I have to hand it to our enrollment specialist. Claire gave me awesome data to help me with this report and I don't have that in the same format for last year. So, I haven't compared the choice rate for the different schools to last year, but that is something I could go look at. I, it did not, it did not feel to me like more families chose Bishop as the first choice compared to previous years. It's just that the strategy required that they got that no in order to enable the, the approach I was taking to work. So, essentially, what happened was, you, whatever buffer zone you were in, you were assigned to the school, to the school furthest west. Everyone was. And so, what that meant is that for Bishop, they were all assigned, if they were in any of Bishop's buffer zones, they were all assigned to Bishop if they were in the Bishop-Thompson buffer zone, but to Stratton or Brackett if they were in the Stratton-Brackett buffer zone. And I think that just highlighted how many families are in a Bishop buffer zone. They've got the biggest buffer zones. So, because it spans the whole length of, the whole north to south length of town. And so, they, it, it more highlighted like how many of families were in that swath than anything else. And a number of them did then go to Bishop because I went back through the waitlist and most of the waitlist requests that were ultimately granted were Bishop waitlist requests. And some of the families that were then said, okay, we actually do have room, said, we're all set. We went and visited Brackett and it was great and we're going to just stick with that. But a number of them went ahead and took Bishop. So, I, I don't know if it was different or if it's just a reflection of the number of families in that area. The majority of those were in, no, I can't say that. I think it was fairly evenly split between the Stratton Bishop and the Thompson Bishop or the Brackett Bishop.
We've gotten that data in the past. I mean, which-
I can get it, yeah.
-zones they've come from. And it's helpful just to see, you know, if they're in this area, they want to go this way or they want to go that way or whatever. And I understand what you're saying about trying to spin everybody west and that's why not as many got their first choice. But also, it's helpful to know how many were offered the option to get their first choice later and, and chose to stay where they are. Because what we're trying to do is ultimately determine, are people going to a school that they preferred to go to or not, even if maybe along the way they changed their mind?
And this, yeah, this is the final assignment. So, what you're seeing here is not the initial assignment, but the final, like, after waitlist considerations and everything else. And I can get the more granular pieces-
Oh, okay, yeah.
-for all of you. But that's, what this is showing is, at the end of the day, eight families who selected Bishop as their first choice, ended up at Bishop as their first choice.
Well, it's eight, it's eight children. I mean, it may be separate, eight students.
That's, yeah.
And, okay.
I, I'd also think that the, how many people sort of were upset initially and then like settled into the, where they got assigned versus like held at, held out till the end of the summer. I feel like that would be useful information.
Yeah.
Any other? Mr. Schlickman?
I think the key for making a decision on our part as to how to adjust buffer zones is to understand the choices made in each of the buffer zones. For example, you've got a buffer zone here, how many want to go east, how many want to go west, how many were assigned east and how many were assigned west for each zone? Because there might be some zones where everybody's asking to go the right way and, and that, that informs us as to how we might tweak the lines around that zone versus one where people are universally trying to go one way and we're sending them the second.
When we've had the map data that shows some of that, which we don't have this linked up to anymore. So, the GIS system that you all had seen previously that has the map on it, that has the, this process does not roll through that system anymore. It's when we lost the GIS manager at the town that managed that, the link up to the data broke and it has not been repaired. And so, we manage all of this internally. And so, I have not, what I would need to do, I completely agree with you, I would love to be able to look at that. What I would have to do is get out a map, look up the address, put it in on the address and, and do that map-based analysis. And I can follow up with our town colleagues and see if they haven't figured some of that out in, in the interim. But at last, I, we, we don't have that capacity anymore. When we did, I had looked at, you could sort of see it by color and like which school a family had chosen. And it was, for multiple years, for, well, the couple of years that I had that capacity to see it, fairly mixed up within a zone what they would choose. Because they would choose on different parameters. And they, this is still there in the rationales that they provide us. Sometimes it's convenience, sometimes it's, you know, my, my whole family has gone there for multiple generations. Sometimes it's my, and I'm only making these decisions really with people who do not already have a child in the school. And so, that, those are the ones I, where I read the rationale. Because if they have a child in the school already, that's where they're going. And when I read the rationales, there's a lot of different ones. There's, we've already figured out our aftercare, as much as I have worked with the after-school programs to not provide an offer prior to us making a buffer zone assignment, that sometimes is followed and sometimes is not. We don't have total control over some of the program. So, I'm meeting with them soon, like next month, to set that up so that that happens less. But I'll get, you know, we have aftercare there, it's easier to drive, we want to walk, we don't want our child to walk across this street. Our neighbors go there, they have friends from preschool who are going to head there and it's all over the map. And there's not a clear angle, like this neighborhood goes, wants to go there always. And I, I would imagine with time, that mixes itself up even more because new people move to town, they don't know people and they develop relationships in different places and some of that is variable. So, I don't know that it would inform. I can try to figure it out. It's time-consuming with a map. I could also talk to our enrollment team about taking a look at some of the addresses. I'm not sure if it would inform a decision or not, just because I think it makes, it's a mix each year and it's difficult to predict.
It's not so much mapping, you have the applications of each person with the choices that were available to them, right?
Yes. Yeah, like on a, we're in this buffer zone and we're more likely to choose this school. But if that doesn't track over multiple years, then, like, if that trend doesn't track, then it may or may not be helpful.
When we first set up this, the buffer zones, the state came in to us and told us, we built a Thompson school that we thought was too big, so you better have a strategy for filling it.
Sorry.
You better have a strategy for filling it. So, we expanded buffer zones to bring more kids into the Thompson district.
Not, not the challenge we had faced.
So, you've got that whole little stretch there, east of Pleasant Street, between Pleasant Street and Spy Pond, that's a buffer zone, Thompson and Bishop, that I'm sure nobody from there is going to Thompson. And there are a couple of other places, based on what we were thinking in 2012, we, we probably want to change as well.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
I just want to clarify, we did not think that Thompson, I mean, the MSBA told us because of the size of Thompson that we had to set up an enrollment, I mean, set up a assignment system that would make it full at, when it opened, which we knew was not a good idea. But that was what we did so we could get the dollars to build it.
Yep. Understood.
And we've added six classrooms to the building and we're still overcrowded.
Um, okay. Did you have anything else? Anybody else? Mr. Thielman or Ms. Morgan?
I, I, just to, to add on to this conversation about like looking what people are choosing for what, there's also, like, the, the fact that this year, kid, families that thought they wanted to go to Bishop ended up at Brackett is going to have carry-on effects next year.
Yep.
So, that's another, I mean, you can't, you can't know what those are, but just based anecdotally on the people I know in buffer zones, if it's not about convenience, it's often about where does my neighbor who's got a kid a year older than my kid-
Yep.
-go because they're, they think they're at the best school in Arlington. So, that complicates it as well.
Yep.
So, are you asking for anything at this point specifically for us from subcommittees or?
Not necessarily. I think, I think it's an ongoing discussion perhaps for, for budget subcommittee for sure as we think about sections for next year. If community relations meets before too long, it might be worth talking through or looking at maybe some more data and then talking through what strategy would make the most sense for this year. And I know that we'll be having some of those discussions soon. So, I don't have action needed tonight.
Okay.
But I am starting already to think about how do we want to learn from this and use it to inform whatever our strategy will be next year.
Okay. Thank you. We will go back on the agenda to the Arlington Fall Athletics update at the school. Welcome. I asked our athletics crew to come and join us. You have a number of pictures in Novus and I'm happy to pull those up also if you want, but I'll pull up your slides and navigate them for you. Give me one second. And thank you for being here. I figured that we could talk a little bit about some of the athletics programming and changes that have been made over the last few years and how the fall season's going.
Yep. So, yeah, so, we had over like 600 students register for fall sports this year with like 500 making rosters. So, but first I'll talk actually about Unified Sports. So, Unified Sports, we started in the spring of 2024. The Middlesex League, which is the league we're in, runs our own Unified Basketball League. So, we joined in 2024 for the fir-, you know, first time being in the Unified League in the school. And it was such a, it was such a great success. We played six games against other teams in our league and then we did a, a jamboree with the 11 other teams in the Middlesex League. We played games, had pizza, interacted with all the other teams. And it was such a great success that in like the fall of 2025, we officially became a MIA sport, was Unified Basketball. And last fall, you know, we played at the Odison because our, the gym wasn't ready and we, you know, we had, we played another six, seven games, did a jamboree at Cambridge and Latin. It was a great experience. We had like 15, 16 kids in the program. And it was such a great success that we, in the winter, this past winter, we offered Unified Bowling. And we took, you know, about 12 kids every Tuesday in the winter for, I think, eight weeks to, to Kings Bowling in Burlington with eight other schools from the Middlesex League. And the Best Buddies Program helped us out with it. It was, you know, it was great working with them and I think our students got a lot, a lot of, a lot out of the program. And so, in last year, then we, so with last year, we offered a unified basket, unified season, every basketball in the fall, bowling in the winter, and then another basketball in the spring. And I think we have some pictures.
Do you? Okay, hold on.
So, this past, this past week, on Tuesday, we had a game in the, in the gym and we had the, the whole, the whole football team, the whole football team came, Bridge Builder Program came, a lot of teachers from the Odison and the Arlington High School came. It was just a great, great environment for these kids to play in. And, and then also today at the, at the pep rally in front, with the whole school, they announced the Unified Basketball Team. Every player got announced and they ran on the court and it was unbelievable seeing like the smiles on their face and how excited they were for everybody supporting them. And, you know, it's probably, it's probably, it's my, it's one of my favorite things. Being a basketball coach in the past, like, I get, I get to go in the gym with these kids and like see the enjoyment and working with them is like, is, you know, probably one of the best parts of my day. And it was great to see everyone that came to the last game and they announced at the pep rally when our next game is. So, we'll probably do another pack, like a pack the gym night, pack the gym day to get as many people as we can in to support the team.
What date for that?
I think October 29th.
Okay.
And then, so that, that'll be our last home game and then we're going to play in a jamboree. play in a jamboree either in Lexington or Cambridge at the end of the season. And then we usually have like a breakup party as well as, with all the, with students. Um, but it's, it, you know, I think it's, it was great just to see them today at the pep rally and how the school like, um, supported every, them and, uh, the fa-, the smiles in their faces were like, I'll never forget it. Like, it was, it was incredible.
That's great.
So. Um, so it's like I said, fall participation, we had over 600 students register for sports in 11 different programs, 20 different teams. Um, we had, you know, um, there's, there's a spot for everybody in athletics. We had no cut sports this fall, where boys and girls cross country, field hockey and football. Um, so, you know, um, students have, you know, the option to, um, if they got cut from another's team, to join another team or a lot of students like, like when they, um, you know, there's no pressure, they can join these teams without having a trial process. You know, if they register on time and, um, you know, for cross country, they're on the team. Football, field hockey, they're on the team. So I think, um, it gives students who don't, don't want the anxiety of trying out for a cut sport team to give them an option to be part of the team. Um, and our participation has, you know, it's gone up 13% since like user fees were eliminated. Um, it's like, you know, I think the, not having user fees is, is, has been, is huge for our programs. Um, you know, it gets students to play multiple sports, um, that they might not normally play. Um, and so it's been, it's been a game changer for, for us. And then, so we've had some great news the last couple of weeks. So like the new turf, baseball, softball, field hockey field is o- opened on September 24th. Um, and then our turf softball field opened, um, this past, um, this past Monday. Um, you know, in the last five years, we've had the one turf field, construction on both sides. So we'd have football on one half of the field with girls soccer and then you would have girls cross country and boys cross country. So like having these fields, and so like teams would be practicing till eight 30, you know, nine, I mean, at night and having these fields like has totally changed, um, the game for us. Cause like, you know, we can have practices right after school, we can get JV teams on the turf as well to have games. Um, and it's just, it's totally, you know, now that we're in full throttle with all three fields, it's, it's, it's great. And, um, like Justin's here, like he's on the cross country team, he, he is gonna talk about like how it's changed their team, even just last week.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Um, in the past two days, so this is my 13th year with the cross country team, um, and I've coached, I was counting today for a different reason. Um, in my 17 years here, it looks like I have done 27 seasons of distance running coaching between cross country, indoor and outdoor track. Um, and I think the largest we've ever had was, um, 53 athletes before on the roster. This year, uh, we, the boys cross country team has 72 individual finishers, like someone who's finished a race for our team, um, which, I mean, it's enormous. It's, it's, we are terrifying when we, when we approach a race. There are just so many of us, we are legion. Um, but y- you know, um, as, you know, as John mentioned, you know, the, the great thing about running is we can run anywhere and the tough thing about running is we stuff the stretch and stuff too. Um, so we've been like doubling and tripling up on the, the team's yoga mats and the aprons trying to, you know, we, we, we were happy to have the space, but the past two days, um, we've been on the softball field and, I mean, even physiologically speaking, the surface for everyone to run on, it, I mean, this is, this is going to be an injury prevention thing for us. Um, we have a lot of folks who are, you know, we, we do between, the varsity team does about 40 to 45 miles a week, um, and being able to take, if we can take 10 of those miles, we, that's 25% of our training, just warming up and cooling down two miles a day. It, it's making, and it's going to make an enormous dif- difference for the program, um, in keeping our athletes healthy and also, you know, safe with, with the chances of us, you know, um, we're, we're not usually at risk in, in the fall. We can see a soccer ball coming or a football, um, but, you know, i- in, sometimes we have to warm up for, for indoor and, or, you know, outdoor track with lacrosse, you know, practicing and stuff like that. And it's, it's a, it's a high-risk sport for, for impact, um, with, you know, they're, they're strong guys, um, and girls. Um, and so it, it's, you know, it's, it's really exciting to have, you know, a, a body of students who are, who are doing really well and, and now have the resources and the facilities to, um, you know, they might not realize it right away, but it's been, it's been great. Um, and, you know, we can stretch in a circle now, not a weird half moon S-shaped thing, um, which it, it's great for building team camaraderie even midway through the season and stuff like that. So we're really appreciative, um, and we look forward to being able to take advantage of, of, you know, even though it's just running, um, we're really looking forward to taking advantage of, of the spaces, um, now and not just moving forward. It's, it's been a, a much different week for us already.
That's great.
So.
So if the com- committee has any questions? Dr. Allison Apey?
Um, first, I'm really glad that we're doing the unified teams. Um, I've seen from afar, a friend's child has participated in another town and it's looked to be a really great program and I think that's, it, it's helped their child develop and, and just do things in a different way and participate on a team and, and stuff. And so I think that's really, um, uh, really a great thing. And I'm glad the new fields are, are being put to good use. Um, I don't think we thought about cross country as we built these things.
It's okay.
Um, but one, one question I have for you, Mr. Bowler, I just wonder for cut sports, how are decisions made, um, in terms of who is on the team and who is off? And what oversight of these decisions is there?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, like, coaches, you know, a lot of coaches do, do things slightly different, um, but usually, usually they have like, you know, um, kind of like, uh, I mean, most coaches have a type of rubric where they, you know, they have different things where, you know, for like, you know, um, speaking like for basketball, like, you know, where's, you know, it's like, you know, playing ability, it could be offense, defense, you know, what they rate, you know, team, like coachability, how they fit into a program. And I think, you know, most coaches, um, you know, they're like, you know, will get together, though, you know, hopefully we, we actually added some assistant coaches this past year in soccer and in basketball to have more eyes on, on, um, the tryouts. So, yeah, so those coaches will, you know, usually talk about each kid and probably try to rank the kids where they, where they see the kids are and, um, and then make decisions based on like, you know, where, you know, the, you know, the, the way the student, athlete's skills are and where they can fit into a team, um, you know, to make, hopefully blend the team together.
Okay. And who, does anyone look at that? I mean, besides the coaches? Like, do you sit down and say, you know, why did you pick these people?
No, I mean, I, when we talk, we talk, we have meetings with the coaches, we do, we talk, you know, we talk about tryouts and different things, but like, I'm not, I'm not there like, you know, over them in the tryouts. They usually, you know, they make, make their decisions and, um, if there's, you know, someone, you know, question, you know, questions decision, they can, you know, they, we always, you know, we can, we have the parent, you know, like, first we talk, if a student got cut, you know, we want the student to go talk to the coach or then if that doesn't work, you know, we'll have the student and parent talk to the coach and then, you know, I, I'll also be involved down, you know, down the road. But, um, you know, usually it's, you know, when we make cuts, it's, it's like the coaches in the program, you know, make the decisions.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody, um, Zoom? Uh, Ms. Morgan?
Um, I think it's just important to note that, um, while a 13% increase in participation after eliminating fees is great, the population of Arlington High School has increased by 10% over the last three years. So it, it's hard to know what's causing the increase in participation, but we certainly have more kids who are attending Arlington High School and will over the next few years, which is gonna be more kids that, um, continue to get cut from their sport of choice. Um, and I know we talked years ago about looking for, you know, trying to look for, for, um, ways to expand access to teams and sports. We had parents come talking to us about girls ice hockey, boys...
You're frozen, Jane.
Oh, okay.
We heard you say, you said, we heard you say ice hockey and then you cut out.
It's fine, I'm done.
Okay. Anybody else? I think, I don't have any.
Thank you very much
Thank you.
for all you're working on and for our amazing athletes and I hope they have a great end of the season.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thanks for having us.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, no, no, this is Dr. Homan, the AHS naming policy, next steps.
Yes, so, um, I, so it's perhaps a combination of myself and Mr. Schlichtman, but we had talked in the spring about our, um, naming, uh, policy and the work that a committee had done and then my subsequent recommendations for naming some of the spaces, um, at Arlington High School, which were approved, there were some next steps in that memo, um, that involved us referring some policies over, particularly some of our naming related policies and we need to suspend also the policy that is tied to the naming of spaces in the New Arlington High School. And take a look at that and revise it so that we can create a new committee to consider any rolling requests and we have received some, um, some of which we can't take up until such time is, uh, passed, if it's for somebody, for example, who has passed away, um, that it's been a little while, but we are gonna have some considerations that we can take into account, uh, for a committee that would probably not meet super often, but could meet annually or biannually to take a look at, um, nominations that have come in and consider whether there are rooms or other spaces that we might want to dedicate or name. And so, um, the goal here would be to refer that over to policy subcommittee to take a look at our policies and make sure that whatever we wanna do next, um, in terms of a subsequent follow-up ongoing, uh, committee is reflected in those and revise the memorials policy accordingly.
Okay, so we have a, a policy FF which deals with what we, how we dealt with, uh, naming proposals in the past. When we started, uh, looking at names for sites within the high school, we set up a special procedure, uh, and separate that out under file FFA. The proc- the process and procedure seems to be a positive one, which I think we're looking to incorporate that model into all naming within the district, uh, in all our schools and properties. So that's sort of the intent. Uh, so the, the motion would be at this point is to suspend policy FFA and have a mor-, a moratorium on considering new naming requests until FF is revised. And that's the motion.
Second. Uh, does anybody wanna discuss this? Uh, we will take a vote. Uh, Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Allison Apey?
Yes.
Mr. Schlichtman?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Carden? I'm not sure if he can answer or not. Uh, Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna assume Mr. Carden is unable to speak to us right now, so that is 6-0 in favor.
Assuming that you're voting in the affirmative.
Ah, yes, I am.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay. Uh, then we're on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. Whoops. Hold on. We will be hosting a family forum next week on our new safety response protocols and we'll be sending out a reminder to families, um, and staff tomorrow about this. You can scan the QR code on this flyer, we'll send the flyer out tomorrow as well to register. We are recording the session. If you register, you'll get a copy of the recording and if you don't register, you'll get a copy of the recording because we intend to send that out, um, and post it to our website for anybody who can't make it. Uh, we do hope some folks will join us live though, we'll turn on the Q and A and make sure that people can ask any questions that they might have about the protocols, uh, towards the end of that session. We launched our elementary district-wide professional development this week and we'll be doing secondary next week. A lot of work went into developing some of the options for our educators. Uh, the offerings included a session on MTSS, uh, in tier-two math instruction, on Thinking Classrooms, um, which is, uh, an approach to teaching mathematics that engages students in a lot of discussion about the strategies they're using to solve problems. A Belonging by Design, uh, course that was focused on culturally responsive classrooms. A course for pair professionals that was specifically designed to help them build their capacity to work within really productive, uh, school, uh, classroom communities and a course on deeper learning and that's just a taste of some of what folks were choosing from and attending this past Wednesday. And then there will be another menu for secondary next week. Um, we also started doing some professional development, myself and Dr. Ford Walker, on MTSS with, uh, whole school groups. We started with Bishop and Pierce, um, this past week and we're essentially doing sessions that talk about what is MTSS, what are some of, uh, um, practices that we already engage in, what are some of, what is some of the language that we want to build out and be using with one another as we're thinking about the team structures associated with tiered systems, uh, what is tier-one instruction, who does that involve? Um, the answer is everyone. Uh, what is tier-two instruction? What are some of the things that, and strategies that we want, um, to use as a whole system to make sure that all of our students are getting access to fantastic instruction that meets whatever needs that they have? So, uh, we enjoyed putting this together and we're enjoying our tour of schools, um, doing this professional development. What we found was that it was packed with content. Uh, we got to share a little bit of this with CIAA Subcommittee this past week and we are gonna dedicate a little more time for the next session and we're also handing off the slides to the principals so that they can do any fill-in, um, that they might need to do and do some follow-up sessions during some of their building meetings. But we'll be trying to hit every single school, uh, before we hit about mid-year and do this same session with everybody and then, uh, consider whether or not we wanna loop back with any subsequent work. And we also gave everybody a chance to look at our revised D cap at the end of that session. So, uh, PD is off and running and we're looking forward to, uh, hearing from folks about how some of that's going and we're looking through the feedback, uh, from the last couple of weeks over the next week or two. We also have an integrated moderate, in, uh, DESI Integrated Monitoring Review, IMR, previously CPR and what was the other acronym?
TFM.
TFM, yes. It has had several different names, um, over the past few years. And so they're doing this, uh, review and the site visit starts November 3rd, so DESI will be onsite that week. And this, uh, review is focusing on, uh, you know what, Ms. Elmer, why don't you talk about what the review is focusing on?
Sure. Um, we, we've had them over, um, you know, they, they run on a cycle of every three years, so cycle A will be that fuller, larger review that we, we had three years ago. So this is cycle B, what used to be called the mid-cycle. It focuses on both civil rights and specialized criteria. Um, and so this one particularly actually has more of the civil rights criteria that they'll be examining, but they will be onsite, as Dr. Homan mentioned, for two days in November. During that time, they, they'll tour the physical plant, so they will go to different school buildings, they wanna see where rooms are located, they wanna make sure that, you know, classes aren't segregated in a, in a hallway, they wanna make sure that the, you know, spaces are, um, particularly timeout rooms or calming corners are, you know, safe spaces, they don't have blocking doors, um, they want, they're not observing instruction per se, like I said, they're very much looking at the physical plant. They will also be interviewing, um, uh, s- some teachers in different roles, uh, just to learn more about the various processes and procedures that during the self-assessment period that was started in January through, um, May, we had to, uh, upload policies and procedures and they'll be interviewing staff to make sure that those policies and procedures match what, you know, we uploaded, um, in our self-assessment. And they also, I spoke with the CPAC on Monday, um, for eligible students, meaning students who have IEPs, uh, we had to provide the name and contact information for, uh, parents and they will, the DESU will reach out directly to those families with a survey. Um, and so you can find information on the website about that. Um, and, yeah, I think that's pretty much it. Once they're onsite, I believe they have 60 days, um, from when they'll complete their site visit and their findings. And so we'll be back sometime in the late winter, early spring to report back on those, um, findings like we have in the past.
Um, the notice here, it's a slightly longer notice, uh, but will be included in the, uh, message to go out tomorrow that also includes the reminder about the forum. So we'll send that notification out to families this week. And finally, I want to welcome a new administrator to the team, Christopher Schweitzer, will join us as Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations on November 3rd. We're looking forward to having him here. Um, we also updated handbooks this week, they're live on the website and the handbooks themselves have already been updated to include religious curriculum accommodation language. Um, and we have some upcoming presentations that I wanted to highlight for the committee and ask, uh, anybody who has any specific requests for presentations ask anybody who has any specific requests for presentations from particular programs or tied to particular initiatives to let me know what those are and we can add them to the agenda. But we'll be planning on doing the outcomes report at our next meeting on October 23rd, the hiring report on November 6th. This is an annual report that we've done that focuses on sort of what our hiring statistics were for the past year. Our elementary school quality plans will be November 20th. They will all join together and provide a shared presentation. We got some input on providing sort of a executive summary review of what some of the differences are between the schools, which we'll also include with your materials for that. We'll do that on November 20th. The middle and high school quality plans on December 4th. I'm also planning on having the lab executive director come to visit us and talk about lab programming at some point this school year. I'll work out a date separately with their executive director. And we know that we'll have to bring math task force recommendations in January. I imagine there will be a lot of other presentations that will come up in the interim that we will need to discuss. And wanted to just highlight for everybody that if there's something that you would like to see on an agenda coming up or a particular program you'd like us to highlight, I'd love to hear those suggestions and we can insert them into the plan. Enrollments should be included in your materials. I don't have the final, final, final October 1 numbers yet, but should have those at the next meeting based on our submission to the state that we're getting finalized now. So I'm happy to take any questions that anyone on the committee has.
Any questions? Dr. Allison Ampe?
Thank you. Two things. One, I remember seeing the survey go out in a previous year and it looks like spam, or at least it did then. And so if it's possible to let people know what it's going to look like and so that when it comes by, they're not just like.
Sure, I can ask her because we don't send it. They send it directly from the DPC.
Right, right. I understand.
So I'll have to find out when exactly they are, or at least the window in which they are going to send it. And we can give folks a reminder that it's coming and it'll be coming from the source or whatever.
Yeah, it, it just, it looked really weird and it wasn't clearly, at least at that time, it wasn't clearly from anything in particular. I mean, it just looked weird. So I just tweeted it.
Did they give us a link to the survey? Or no? No?
No, it's, it's.
They, they emailed directly, so we just provide the list.
And it just, it doesn't, especially if you didn't realize it was coming out, it just looks very odd.
Because I could put the link in my thing if they give us the link, but they won't. Okay.
Yeah. So yeah, if you can make sure that people understand that it's coming and that it does look weird and stuff. So, okay, so that was one thing. And then the other thing, I meant to ask this last time, but Cora, I wasn't here last time. I'm wondering why, for enrollment, why do we only have 81 kids in monotony where we had been thinking that we would have 100?
It, it grows during the year and this actually was on a question list. I don't know if you actually know if she has like under, fewer than she expected to have?
Oh, I don't know, but if you want me to, I can find out. I will say that yes, generally the numbers grow over the year. But in the past, you're right, last year we were starting at a higher number, I think, than we had in previous years. So I can follow up and find out more.
Yeah, I'm partly wondering just because the, the number, I mean, I understand what you're saying, that it grows during the year. But also we only get paid for these kids who are counted in October, so.
Yeah, we can only admit via the tuition, a certain number because we have to reserve the spots.
So we, you know that we have to have the integrated balance, so 51, 49% if we go over, we have to get a waiver. So generally they do cap the enrollment for tuition spots, also with that starting birth date, right? You have to be three by the start of the school year. Whereas the students who turn three and are eligible through EI or eligible through special ed, that's the part that grows over the year, right? I can find out more information.
Yeah, it just feels like for having an additional classroom now, this number feels low. And I'm just wondering about that.
It might also help to just break it out because we do, we do have to increase the sub-separate population, which has grown. And so there are more than one classroom for that. So it would probably be helpful to get both the numbers and the breakout of the classrooms.
Okay, yeah, that might, I mean, what you're saying about the sub-separate, that might explain it.
We can take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Okay, thank you. We are now at the consent agenda. So I just read this here, whole thing. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the committee so requests, in which event the item will be considered in its normal sequence. Warrant number 26070, September 30th, 2025, $1,009,933.98. Warrant number 26088, October 14th, 2025, $1,103,090.30. School committee meeting draft minutes from September 25th to 2025. School committee special meeting draft minutes, October 3rd, 2025. So, Bo.
Second.
Okay, we'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlichtman?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Carden?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That is a 7-0 vote. So I don't, how do we do, so we, are we adjourning and then executive?
Subcommittee liaisons.
Oh, sorry, I was, I got, I had them myself. Subcommittee liaison reports. Ms., Dr. Allison Ampe?
So budget met to meet our, our candidates for the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, and we are pleased to be bringing Mr. Schweitzer on board. And that's all I have to report right now.
Okay. I have nothing from community relations, but we will be putting out a notice, or we'll, we need to appoint another human rights commissioner for December. So we will be doing that at some point soon. Ms. Exton?
CIAA met on Tuesday afternoon. We had a report from Dr. Ford Walker on the updated de-cap and MTSS plan. We spoke briefly about the school quality plan, presentation, plan schedule, which you just heard about in the superintendent's update. And we have another meeting scheduled for October 30th.
Facilities, Ms. Morgan?
We met on Friday. We looked at the tech and space plan again, and we will be meeting again to talk more about the tech and space plan. That meeting has not been scheduled.
Mr. Schlichtman, policy and procedures.
Yeah, we're working with Ms. Diggins to schedule a couple of meetings in the immediate future. We've got a, a full plate.
And Arlington High School Building Committee, Mr. Thielman?
The opening ceremony is on the 25th and we need volunteers. So if anyone on the school committee hasn't volunteered yet, we'd love to have you.
Okay, we lost you for a sec.
Sorry. So the, the open house of.
We got that. Yeah.
Did you get that or no?
You're looking for volunteers for the open house?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Anything else?
The project is moving along great. It's almost done. If you've been out there, it looks wonderful.
Okay. Any liaison reports? Announcements? Future agenda items? Okay, now we adjourn and then we go to, how do we do?
No, we, I would like to move to go to executive session to conduct, conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect upon the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, should the chair so declare for unit D. And does the chair so declare?
I so declare.
Thank you. That's the motion.
I second.
Second.
Ms. Exton?
Yes.
Dr. Allison Ampe?
Yes.
Mr. Schlichtman?
Yes.
Mr. Thielman?
Yes.
Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Carden? I think he can't talk. I vote yes, so that is a 6-0 vote to move to executive session and we will not be coming back. Is that right?